Okay, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV 7. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. To comply with the Governor's proclamation declaring a state of emergency in Maryland to minimize the person-to-person spread of COVID-19, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate with the county commissioners' meetings. Citizens may watch our meetings live on our QAC website at www.qac.org/live or on QACTV's television channel, Atlantic Broadband Channel 7 and High Definition Channel 507. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to www.qac.org-publiccomment. And citizens may email comments to publiccomment@qac.org. We will accept comments up until the end of the meeting. Comments received will be read during the press and public comment period on this evening's agenda. To maintain public health protocols, seating will be limited at our meeting this evening. If you have any respiratory symptoms such as fever, cough, and/or shortness of breath, please refrain from attending the meeting and notify a healthcare provider. We acknowledge your participation, and by attending, you acknowledge that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you care to speak, please sign the sheet on the information table outside. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing for the commissioners' review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Chris Corcarino.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence for Corporal Keith Heathcock from Delmar Police.
Okay, we just held a closed session under Section 3-305B, three of the general provisions articles to discuss land acquisition, and no decisions were made in the closed session. So, moving on to the agenda for this evening, the agenda for today's meeting, May the 11th, and the regular enclosed session minutes from your April 27th meeting were distributed electronically for review. Do we have any additions and/or corrections?
Motion to add two action items to tonight's agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve minutes and agenda as amended.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Page 15.
Motion's passed. Five zero.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. That brings us to our first initial press and public comment period. Thank you for taking the time to express your views to the county commissioners during this public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, address, and topic of interest. Keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
We have one email.
Okay.
"To whom it may concern, my name is Andrew Behringer, and I am with the Towson Therapeutic Riding in Graysonville. We are attempting to get signage for our nonprofit through the tourist attraction sign program. We've been told that due to the pandemic, a hold has been placed on making these decisions. At Towson, we help veterans and disabled individuals using horseback riding as therapy. Our riders greatly need the ability and ease to navigate to our location. I'm hoping that our county commissioners can help this process out so we can continue to help our riders. Thank you for your time."
That's all we have tonight. Nobody else signed up?
Close motion, no comment.
All right, commissioners, we can move on to new business. First up, we have the Department of Public Works. So if you'd like to turn to tab number two. And first, we have the draft annual letter to the Secretary of Transportation identifying our transportation priorities, and Steve Cahoon is here to present that.
Good evening, commissioners. Steve Cahoon, Queen Anne's County Department of Public Works. Priority letter in front of you is very similar to the letter you've seen in past years. The priorities remain the same. We keep them consistent from year to year. The priorities are work to reduce congestion in the Bay Bridge and Onken Island, construction improvements on the Route 18 corridor, construct US 50-213 interchange there at Y Mills at Chesapeake College, construct at-grade intersection improvements along 301 for safety improvements at J-Turns along there, some paving on 301, and continued support of our local transit efforts and our local bike and pet efforts by continuing to fund trails. So, very consistent with what commissioners have made their priorities from year to year.
The reason is because we don't get anything taken off of there, unfortunately.
All right, I move to approve and sign the 2021 priority letter to the Maryland Department of Transportation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Have you seen the letter from County Executive Pittman on the comment period for the...
I have not.
This file, I'll forward it to you.
It's a good read. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
All right, thank you, commissioners. We have two items for the roads board, so if you would convene as the roads board, please. All right, the first item is a systematic replacement of the shoplift. Can I get a motion on that?
I move to purchase one Stericone Model 4120-26 four-post heavy-duty lift from Allen and Ty and Associates of Fairfax, Virginia in the amount of $38,360 via the Sourcewell existing contract number 013020-SKI.
Shane, what is this?
Second.
Oh, sorry. It's one of our lifts out in the shop to lift vehicles up. As you can see, it's replacing a 1981 Challenger lift, which was part of the original sanitary and was moved up subsequently after that. Basically, it's just had its life, and there's nothing left really. We don't want to put any more money into it, so it's time to replace.
Is this the lift we use as the table for the Christmas party?
That would be the parallelogram lift. No, we're not replacing that yet. That's still 2-0.
But the good thing is we're getting cross-utilization happen.
That's right.
All right, any other discussion, questions?
That was funny, Steve.
What, sir?
All right, got a motion to approve one Stericone Model 4120-26 four-post heavy-duty lift from Allen, Ty Associates of Fairfax in the amount of $38,360,000. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Our next item is item three on page 17. Again, we're in tab two. This is a systematic replacement of fleet equipment, two three-quarter-ton pickups. So, can I get a motion on that?
I move to purchase two Ford F-250 three-quarter-ton pickups from Apple Ford of Columbia, Maryland in the amount of $80,970.42 via the Montgomery County existing contract number 1065349.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Okay, I think that concludes the public works portion of the agenda this evening. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Steve.
Shane?
Hey Shane, quick question. Do you have a schedule for your road coverings and asphalting and slurry sealing and...
We're still working with our contractors on when they can fit us in. As with most of our contractors that do that type of stuff, they do multiple counties and the state as well, so it's a... Let's see what their schedule looks like to get them in here. But we have some work we want to finish this year, maybe the next month to get started.
Okay.
Asphalt mainly. We've got that kind of lined up, yes.
Okay.
We can certainly get that schedule to the commissioners when it's available. We'll do that, all right.
Basically, just so I can give citizens a timeframe that are concerned about the roads and that kind of stuff. Thank you.
All right. Okay, moving on to new business, we have tab number three. If you want to turn to tab number three. Item one is a proclamation for pillar of the month, caring.
I think Stevie's got it.
Stevie has this one? There you go. Commissioner Wilson.
No. He doesn't have the... It's in your book.
It's in the book, yeah.
Want me to read it?
Yeah. It has older Americans.
Ah, okay.
Is that a dig?
I'll read it. I'll get this one.
Jim's caring, we'll let him do it.
I'll get this one. You get the senior one.
Hey, oh, thanks.
No problem. Get you back in your comfort zone there. Pillar of the Month, caring, 21-23 proclamation. Whereas half-full gift boutique joins with the county commissioners declare Queen Anne's County as a character counts community, and whereas we recognize the need to care for each person in our community in word and deed, and whereas we are committed to caring for our neighbors by supporting organizations that are working hard to make a positive difference in our world, and whereas if we all do small acts of kindness each day, it would create an endless ripple that will impact lives, and whereas we know the importance of teaching our students to care for one another when they're young, so when they are grown, they will continue to care for those around them, and whereas we are grateful to live in a community that demonstrates the pillar of caring with such generosity. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby designate the character counts pillar of the month for May to be carrying, or caring, excuse me, signed to Queen Anne's County Commissioners. Phil, were you taught at a young age to...
Pardon me?
Nothing. Anyways.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Moran. Okay, item number two on page two is a support letter for the Kenton Arrows Foundation for a wayfinding project for a $19,000 grant to help supplement the development of a master plan for the Kenton Arrows waterfront area. Can I get a motion on that?
I move to sign the Kenton Arrows waterfront pedestrian wayfinding project with the maritime heritage enhancement support letter.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Item number three on page four is a recommendation for approval of a revised broadband grant submission project. This is some good news. We did submit nine projects for this particular grant, of which three have been awarded. However, they have been adjusted slightly in terms of their scope. The good news is, is that we are getting 157 homes connected as a result of this, and the cost per home, you know, with our matching dollars, is equivalent to what it was originally in the original grant proposal. So this is just a revised subject area, and we'd like to proceed with this.
I move that the staff move forward to work with the ISP to revise the project area as needed with the revised county contribution of $72,738 from the public fiber infrastructure capital project.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Item four on page six is the... We do this every year. It's the housing bond allocation transfer for 2021. It's a request from the Housing Community Services Group to utilize the Queen Anne's County housing bond allocation at the state level for their allocation for housing bonds, and our jurisdiction, the amount is $1.93 million.
I move to sign the transfer of allocation letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development as described and recommended by the Department of Community Services Housing Division.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. The next two items are from our Parks Department for some equipment. Number five, item five on page 12 is a request to purchase a 2020 Diamondback rearload refuse body trash truck from Maryland.
I move to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase a New Way eight-yard Diamondback trash truck from Maryland Industrial Trucks Incorporated in the amount of $114,580, utilizing the Sourcewell discount pricing, Queen Anne County number 25449, funded to come from the Department of Parks and Recreation's prior year fund balance from the capital equipment budget.
Second.
Got a motion, and a second, any discussion?
Is this to supplement our existing trucks so that we can get a little bit more area covered in terms of pickup, or is this... Are we replacing, systematically replacing one here?
I think it's an addition, isn't it?
It's an addition, yeah.
Okay.
And the existing truck's pretty old, too.
Yes, it is. I mean, I've seen it, that's why I was asking which way we were going with this. So this will be the primary, and the existing will probably be like a...
Backup.
Supplement.
This is a great price.
Oh, yeah.
For this piece of equipment.
Yep.
More discussion about the trash truck?
Let's get two.
All right, we got a motion to buy a trash truck. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go, five zero.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Item six on page 15 is a request to purchase two John Deere Gators and one John Deere Diesel zero-turn motor from Atlantic Tractor. Can I get a motion on those?
I move to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase two 2021 John Deere Gators and one 2019 John Deere Z994R diesel zero-turn mower from Atlantic Tractor LLC in the amount of $24,800, utilizing the USA government discount, funding to come from the Department of Parks and Recreation's prior year fund balance from the capital equipment budget.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion?
So, just to note, they traded in some other equipment and got a trade-in value of $14,000 towards that price.
Yep, absolutely.
And anybody that's hearing us and watching us, prior year fund balance from the capital equipment budget, what we did at Parks is they went through and they had projects spanning back seven, eight, 10 years, with... Still had some balance left on them, so we consolidated all these, and this is where this funding is coming from, that since those projects are completed and off the books, we took the remaining money and put it towards a good use and some equipment that they needed.
All right, we got a motion to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase two 2021 John Deere Gator and one 2019 John Deere Z994R diesel zero-turn mower from Atlantic Tractor LLC in the amount of $24,800, utilizing the US government discount. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
Thank you, commissioners. Item number seven on page 22 is a letter of certification for an FY22 state grant for the Kenon Library to certify we have matching funds to support this last grant for the library at $130,000. And we've obviously allocated $1.7 million, so we clearly have matched that. So, it's just a state certification letter to confirm that.
I move that the letter of certification necessary to secure construction funding through the Maryland County Public Library Capital Grants Program in fiscal year 2022 for the expansion and renovation of the Kenon Branch Library be signed and provided by the Maryland State Library.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, a second, to all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
Okay, thank you, commissioners. Item number eight on page 26 is the... This is a repeat from last meeting, the Rural Legacy Easement Valuation System. So, the board had asked for Donna Landis-Smith to answer some questions, so I believe she is here this evening to answer all the questions that you have.
There she is.
She is, okay.
In here.
Welcome, Donna. Good to see you.
How are you all?
Great.
Good, great. So I understand there was some confusion and some questions about my memo that I sent out the last time. So, let me start on why this was brought in front of you all. So Rural Legacy is administered through the Department of Natural Resources, and they derive their appraisal values from MAF appraisals. So over a 13-year period, and I included a chart in your paperwork that I gave you of what those MAF appraisals have been since 2007 to 2020.
Right.
So we take that average, and that is the baseline that Rural Legacy uses for a payment value. So on our Easement Valuation System from the past, DNR requires us to take 40% of that 13-year average of whatever that number is, and the 13-year average was $8,090. So the base value for Rural Legacy is $3,236. So then I start taking...
Hold on, so you're taking 40% of the $8,000 to get to that?
Yes, that's correct.
And that's $8,000 per acre, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So we start out with that baseline value, because Rural Legacy looks at very different things than MAF does. Rural Legacy looks at ecological issues, environmental issues, green infrastructure, waterfront. It's not necessarily focused on prime agricultural soils, it's a bigger picture. So, we start looking at the property and look at the added attributes, and that equates to dollars. So, for example, on the Easement Valuation System, you look and see if they have waterfront and how much waterfront they have, and that equates to dollars. The soil capacity, which is your Class 1, Class 2, Class 3 soils, frittable land, Group 1 and Group 2 for woodland, that equates to dollars. And then contiguous to other local preserved area, that is more... So everything that you get added into equates to dollars. So what this memo is about, when Rural Legacy looks at a property, it's a negotiated process. So we negotiate dollar values. It's not a flat rate like MAF is. And if the landowner wants to reserve a right for constructing a house or having the ability to subdivide that property, Rural Legacy puts that in the easement, and that's negotiated with the landowner. So in the past, on our Easement Valuation System, we took a basic 10% of the fair market value times the number of lots they wanted to preserve or reserve for the ability to build at some time, and it's very restrictive. It's generally about, dependent on the size of the property, one to two houses. So if you have 100-acre property, nine times out of 10, the Rural Legacy Board will only allow one additional house. If it's a 400 or 500-acre property, they may allow two houses. So it's not that the landowner comes in and says, "I want two houses," and you automatically get it. The Rural Legacy Board has to approve that. So, in the past, our local ag advisory board, they wanted that impact for the reduction for the reservation of a lot to be minimal. So that was the 10% of the fair market value, which would have been 10% of the $8,090.
So you want to reduce that?
No.
Oh.
DNR is asking us to increase that.
So they would lose money then on the...
Yes, they're trying to discourage reserving extra lots to be available on the Rural Legacy Easement. They don't want two or three or four or five houses. They would like whatever is existing on the property to stay as is. I, a lot of times, find that the landowners are looking far down into the future and want, depending on the size...
$100 to live on the farm and build a house.
Absolutely, and even past their generation. You know, at 100 years from now, if there is 150-acre property and there's one house on there, they might reserve the ability to build one additional house. So it's not like they get five, six, or seven houses. And it is negotiated and has to be approved by the Board of Trustees through Rural Legacy. So the DNR administrator sent me an email and pretty much said, "You're not charging enough to reserve that lot right." So I included some examples of other counties on how they value their reserved rights. But some of the counties, as we all know, have a lot higher values than what Queen Anne's County does, because we were just throwing around some numbers. The local ag advisory board was looking at recent sales of residential lots being subdivided off of farms and what their values are, and some of the examples that I gave you are quite higher than what they thought that Queen Anne's County's lot values would be worth. For example, in Harford County, to reserve one residential lot, they deduct $85,000 out of the easement value. I think that's a little extreme, personally, but...
Are you saying?
Quantico Creek Rural Legacy Area, which is in Wycomico County, they charge $45,000 per lot to reserve a lot. Another example...
What were we charging before you got the email?
$809 per lot.
$809?
That's what our local ag board had voted to do, because they wanted the reservation of a lot to be minimal impact on the easement value, because they're already taking 40% less than the fair market value to start off with.
How did they come up with $809? Because we're only getting... They're only getting 40%.
Well, by the time you add back in all the attributes of the farm, and the values for Rural Legacy are about the same as MAF values. They're just about maybe $50 difference, which is an average of about $4,000 an acre.
And how many lots does MAF allow?
You have two choices. You can do one unrestricted lot, which can be for anybody in the family, cousin, aunt, uncle, neighbor, whatever, or you get three family lots, depending on the size of the property. If it's a 50-acre property, you actually only get one. So it depends on the acreage, but anything basically over 150 acres, they get three family lots. But you don't pay back the money through MAF until you actually build the house, and you pay it back at the rate that you got paid per acre. So if you got $4,000 an acre through MAF, you decide that your son wants to build a house, and it's a two-acre lot, and that's the maximum that you can have, then you pay back $8,000.
Right. But so yours was based on 10% of the $8,090?
Yes.
You paid $800. So, looking at the other example you had, that would be 500 times...
Yes.
That seems ridiculous.
Yes, and Rundle charges $100,000 a lot.
I mean, well...
So, when the administrator from Rural Legacy sent me these examples, I said, "You know, I understand some of these counties, but a lot of these counties' land values are extremely higher than what Queen Anne's County is." And so my local ag board looked at these numbers and looked at the comparisons of the other Rural Legacy areas, and they decided to take the $3,236, which is your starting point, your baseline value per acre that Rural Legacy gets, and you have two options. You can make a lot non-subdividable, which means the house that gets constructed on the house has to stay with the farm. It can never be subdivided off and sold as a separate lot. Or you can have a lot reserved that it could be subdivided and sold at some point in time.
They have two different values?
Yes. So the ag board chose, if they chose the option of a non-subdivenable lot, which meant... Because there are properties that we have within the county that don't have houses on them, and that's not a good thing to have a preserved property in perpetuity and not have a house associated with. It's like an orphan lot. And unfortunately, over the years, with people passing and running through the generations, we have probably 10 properties within the county that can never have a house on it. And that's unfortunate, because if someone were... Wants to buy a property, if it's 250 acres, you can't live there. That's not a good situation to be in. So we're trying to look forward and plan for way past our lifetime of when the farm's sold two and three times, and if somebody wants to buy it, they should have the ability to be able to live on the house that's there or be able to construct a new one. Yes, that's right. And it's not... It's not taking away the value of the property being farmed, and it doesn't take away aesthetic value for waterfront properties if it's one house. So the local ag advisory board decided if they wanted to reserve a right to construct a house and not give it the ability to subdivide off, we shouldn't take as much deduction out of the easement as if they had a lot that they could subdivide off at some point in time.
Agreed.
So the value that they came up with, and we threw around lots of numbers, and we looked at local properties that had been sold recently, building lots, their values, and they decided to take a non-subdivitable lot would be five times the $3,236, which would equal to $16,180 that would be deducted out of the easement upfront. If they had a lot right available that they could subdivide off and construct a house at some point in time, the deduction would be $25,888. And that would change from year to year, because these values, the baseline, changes from year to year based on MAF appraisals. So, and farm prices have been relatively flat in the last probably eight years. They haven't varied by much. So these may vary a little bit. It might be $16,000 the next year, or $17,000 for the non-subdivitable. It might be $26,000 for the subdividable, or it might be a little less. So that will fluctuate according to the appraisal values. And unfortunately, DNR has said if we don't change these values to stay in line with other Rural Legacy areas, they're not going to give us any more money.
So how many... What's our track record for the last three to five years with Rural Legacy? I mean, how many... Is this something we're... I mean, because I know the MAF formulas and how we go to get that. How is Rural Legacy done? Is it, you know, is it ever... Is it, you know, is it every year they have a set amount of acres, or is it, how does-
We submit our, the county submits a grant application every February, and we give them the top five ranked farms in that Rural Legacy area. The demand isn't as high in the Rural Legacy areas because you have to be within that area. So you have to be within the Lands End Rural Legacy area or the Foreman Branch Rural Legacy area. So we have roughly, I'd say probably 25 properties that are waiting to be funded in those two Rural Legacy areas. And there's more calling all the time. We're averaging right around $2 million a year from Rural Legacy. And depending on the size of the property, this past year, we were able to do two properties. And you all usually prioritize one Rural Legacy area over the other. So we flip-flop every other year. So the year before, we did three. Last year was Lands End. We had two properties. The year before, it was Foreman Branch. We had three properties. So depending on the acreage, it just depends on, you know, how much money we receive. And the Rural Legacy Board looks at how quickly you spend the money, what kind of discounts that you give, what kind of negotiations you have, and they also look at how many reserved lot rights. We're averaging one lot right per property. That's what it's generally been in the past. Now, I had one 320-some acres. They reserved three lots. So one lot for every 100 acres, that's not too bad. They only had one house on the property as it was.
So real quick question, Donna. So looking at the chart on the, how they came up with that average, I noticed that they, so they're using 10 years, but it's not a continuous 10 years. They've, they've cut out, is there a reason they cut out like 2010, 2012, 14?
Some of those years, we didn't have MAF applications because-
Legacy.
This, well, this chart was based on-
Oh, this is the MAF chart?
The appraisals from MAF, yes. There was a few years that there was not enough revenue coming in, and they did a two-year cycle in one easement application.
Gotcha.
So that's why they didn't, they didn't have years in there.
Okay. But it's always a 10-year cycle, so when they get another year in, basically '07 will drop off?
Yes, that's correct.
So it could fluctuate because, like, I'm looking at, I guess it's 17, where that's a huge jump, $10,200, whatever dollars.
We had a waterfront property go in that year, and then the appraise is very high.
Gotcha, okay.
That's why that one was elevated. But you can see over the past 10 years, it's very consistent. It's pretty flat. So the values of farmland has not really varied, and they're a good scope of farmland all over the county. It's not just specifically around Centerville or Queenstown or Wy Mills. It's a good gauge of where farmland is. North County, farms generally do not appraise as high as they do around Centerville, Queen Anne, and Wy Mills. Not generally. So unfortunately, we, as a county, have to abide by their rules.
So, I mean, what's your feeling on if we go back with the 15 and the 25? You think that they're going to be, that's going to satisfy their-
The, the local ag advisory board, we're just basing these numbers on an easy math. If you set a flat fee, that's certain, and this still has to be approved by the Board of Trustees at Rural Legacy. So you can certainly make a recommendation-
Well, this is a huge, I mean, this is a huge jump from where we were, so you would figure they would say, "Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's an honest and genuine effort."
Effort, right, exactly.
I tried to make sure that we get the most money in our landowners' pockets as possible. You know, that's the ultimate goal, is because it's permanent, and once it's done, it's done. You know, and it's a lifelong commitment for these properties, and it's a lifelong commitment for landowners. And, you know, I feel like they're giving up a lot, but I, you know, I want, and I always tell them, ultimately, you want to be happy with this decision that you make. And I feel as though with, working with landowners, that when you start talking 50, 80,000 deduction, and some of these easements are only a couple hundred thousand dollars, you take away half of their easement value just for one residential lot, I don't think that's quite fair.
Right. So do you think we ought to, I mean, amongst you guys, put a set amount on it so it's at least a budgetable item versus basically playing the stock market with the rolling prices? I mean, because like I said, if you look at, you know, you have the year where it's 10,000, if you just happen to be the person coming in in that next cycle where it's the 10,000, now you're going to be paying, you know, 9,000 times, you know, five or whatever it is, and you're going to be paying 45 grand again. I just think we should give them a set amount.
Well, the Farm Bureau came up with the formula, which gave you the new numbers, correct?
No, that's not correct. It's the local ag advisory board, and that's five local elected members that you all appoint from applications. And they felt as though with, I mean, it is an elevated market. We all know that the housing market is extremely high right now, but they've looked over the past few years and kind of, we looked at land transfers and so forth to get a good gauge of where, if you split a farm lot off, what can you actually get for it as a buildable
So to you, is that a good number that they came up with?
I think it's awful, but...
I mean, that's what I'm saying. And it's adjustable, that's my-
That's just me. And I guess my biggest issue with this is they get this deducted upfront out of the easement where MAF, until that house is actually built, that deduction isn't taken. And there may be some landowners that are selling their easements now that are having that money taken out, and they'll never build a house on there. I don't necessarily agree with that.
You sort of force them to make that decision?
Yes.
For your bank report upfront, I mean, it's-
Yeah, I would think that they would want that money back once the house is constructed, but-
I mean, to me, I don't think it should exceed what an impact fee for something like that would be. You know, if you're talking 45 grand, that's three times what the impact fee for that would be.
Yes.
It just seems ridiculous to have to pay that much.
So we need to-
Something you already own.
So we need to set the bar then somewhere where-
Well, it's either that or we, we, we're either voting to take their formula and use it, or like I said, maybe if we can make a flat fee-
You can make a flat fee, sure, absolutely.
And see if that'll float.
What do you think the flat fee should be?
What do I think it should be?
$809, she already said that, I'm kidding.
812.
812, let's raise it.
Yeah. To, I guess, not to upset the Rural Legacy program administrators and-
Yeah, that's what I'm going to, if we do it too low, then we're going to get in trouble, right?
Considering where we were and where they think that we should be, you know, it may be a 10,000 and a 15,000.
That's what I was thinking. That's where I was at.
Because that's, that's still a hit, but it's not horrible. And the values that we're paying for Rural Legacy is roughly around 4,000, 4,200. So that would kind of be like a two-acre deduction or a three-acre deduction. And that would stand to reason if they were to split out a lot and environmental health requires them to have two acres, that would be roughly a little more than what they would have to pay back if they had to pay back through MAF.
It's literally a thousand percent increase.
That's my analogy of thinking.
I mean, it's a thousand percent increase if we go to 10,000.
Sure.
You know? I mean, I hate even saying that word, but it, from 800 to, you know, 10,000.
They just caught up to my, to our game.
I mean, I, so unless anybody's got any other ideas, I'm going to make a motion to have it for the non-subdivitable at 10,000 and the subdivitable at 15,000.
Second? Second? Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Silence is consent.
I will prepare a letter and bring it up to Margie to have your signatures on it, and then I will forward it on to the DNR.
Thank you very-
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate the explanation.
Thank you so much.
Explaining to us what that was.
Hopefully, it's a little clearer then.
It is now.
Yes, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Donna.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, Commissioners, we have two desk items for this evening. Item number one is a request for a vehicle replacement for our county health officer, slash county medical officer. This would be an administrative vehicle for, for his use. I get a motion on that, please?
I move to set the annual sewer and water operations and-
Try not, Jim.
Next one. This, this is out of order.
Number 10.
What was taking so long is trying to formulate a motion because there are not one written.
Okay, then. I move to authorize the Queen Anne's County Department of Health to purchase one 2021 Ford Police Interceptor through the State of Maryland's Vehicle Contract with Apple Ford, located in Howard County, an amount of $35,000. And to be outfitted with lights, sirens, console, thick shag carpet, and striping at the amount of $12,000.
That shag carpet's a-
It's a must.
Burgundy. The man makes the motion, you got, you know?
I'm sure Dr. Ciatola will appreciate the shag carpet addition.
Absolutely.
Make sure that gets him there.
I'm going to give them purple neon lights inside on the runner boards, too, so.
So I think the shag is if available.
That's right.
Is what the motion says.
That's right.
It'll be available.
All right. Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0, shag carpet is.
I'll read this motion since I think I'm the only one that's on City Water, right?
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, first, before we go to item two, can we please convene as the sanitary commission?
There it is.
Okay, thank you. And this item, desk item two-
Yeah, go ahead.
Is our FY '22 water and sewer rate memo. We do this every year. As we know, that the rate, the rates go up automatically by 6.5% for sewer and 5.5% for water unless the county commissioners select a different rate escalator. And we are recommending, as we have in the past for several decades now, a 2.5% escalator for both water and sewer. And this does not apply to the new sub-district on Route 8, the ski sub-district that is going to stay flat until such time as we complete all four phases minimally for any rate increases in that particular sub-district. This is just for K and S and G.
Let's repeat that again, it does not apply-
This does not apply to Route 8 sub-district.
That plan is still in place as the public was informed.
Right, that's right.
I move to set the annual sewer and water operation and maintenance rate escalator for all sanitary district rate schedules for the fiscal year '22 budget year at 2.5% with the exception of the Southern Kent Island sub-district, which shall see no increase in rates.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0.
5-0, okay. Thank you, Commissioners. That is all of our action items for this evening. We do have one legislative item, so if you want to turn to tab number seven.
Just to be introduced, right?
Yes, this is for introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Commissioner Corcorino, introduce ordinance 2105. We also have a proclamation next, presentation from Kathy Willis. Does Kathy hear you?
That's all right.
A little ahead of schedule, I know. We want to turn back now to tab number six. We have proclamation 21-20, Older Americans Month. So here comes Kathy. Come on and join us. Director Willis.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Lovely. Whereas, this is proclamation 21-20, Older Americans Month 2021, which Commissioner Moran has detailed that I should read out of my expertise. Whereas, Queen Anne's County includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties, and whereas Queen Anne's County benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience. And Queen Anne's County recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. And whereas, Queen Anne's County can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Queen Anne's County, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our county by our hand, Queen Anne's County Board of County Commissioners. So be it.
Thank you very much. As you'll recall, I come in here every year for Older Americans Month. This year's theme is communities of strength. We've all experienced quite a tough year, and especially my seniors, I believe. The exciting news that I want to share that you all should be aware of now is the senior centers reopened last Thursday.
Yay!
We were very excited, very happy. It's on a limited basis, it's appointment only, but we're starting with the guidance of our fearless leader in the Health Department, Dr. Ciatola, and it's working so far. They're taking an easy approach back to the senior centers, following all the guidelines, and we're working out how to safely get everybody back involved. They have been away from these centers for a whole year. It's been very detrimental to many of our folks, and everyone's very much looking forward to this, this positive venture here. One of the, the only other thing I wanted to mention tonight is on the senior center aspect, this is a good month to, to let everyone know that you have the upcoming grand open or groundbreaking for the YMCA senior center in Centerville that will be June 30 at 4:00 PM. So we're very excited. Will be the first time we'll be working for a senior center back in Centerville since 2011. So great month to, to look forward to that. So I thank you for all of your continued support. This is a very positive venture for all of us. As, as most of us have seen how much people have missed those senior centers over the past year, this is expanding and helping our community. So we're very excited and pleased with this venture, so thank you.
I'm sorry, Kathy, what was the time on that again?
4:00 PM.
Okay.
And you'll be receiving invitations from Robbie Gill, and they've already snuck in on your calendars anyway, I believe, so. So we hope to see you all there. Very exciting times, so.
So one question before you go. I imagine your vaccination rate is extremely high. Is every, do you have any notion of-
Not everybody is in the, in the senior population. Only, we, we cannot mandate-
Sure, no.
We are, we are asking when they come in if they have been vaccinated or if they would like to be vaccinated. It's really something that we have to be careful because of HIPAA. So most everybody that we're closely familiar with has been vaccinated, the majority. However, there are some people, whether for medical reasons or other reasons, chose not to and will stay that way and not get that vaccination. So it's really by personal choice, and, and they consult with their doctors, too, depending on their condition, so.
Sure.
But I think they've done a phenomenal job of reaching the seniors and the senior housing and all of those places that folks can't get out. So we, we are also looking at if we find a large number of people returning to the senior center who say, "Yes, I'd like to be vaccinated, but I haven't been," we'll make sure they get vaccinated. And Dr. Ciatola offered that we could do those, just do a mobile clinic, come right to the senior center to provide that. So we're, we're prepared, but we haven't had the ask yet, so so far it's going well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Commissioners, that concludes all of our presentations for this evening, so we can see if we have any other pressing public comment at this point.
How about the, introduce the legislative?
First did.
I did, yeah.
Oh, you did?
Something like that.
Damn.
Yeah, fast.
Yes, you have-
Take care of this. On your phone.
I must, no, actually, I wasn't. I was reading this polluted, you read this thing? Holy crud.
Yes.
Ow.
I have public comments.
Okay. Did you, did you sign up?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Go ahead and state your name, please, and let us know who you are. Yep.
My name is Jenna Scott. I actually got here a little late. One of my classes ran late, and you approved the thing I was coming to talk about right as I got in. But I'll talk about it anyway. So I'm a resident of Graysonville, and I'm also three days away from finishing my bachelor's in civil engineering. Very exciting.
Congratulations, Dennis.
Yep. So having read the draft, which has now been approved, of the transportation priorities letter to the M D O T, I'm really disappointed, actually, in the lack of attention paid to transit and bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. The letter doesn't reflect an understanding that such infrastructure is essentially non-existent in Queen Anne's County and needs a major overhaul, not continued support. Any mention comes across as an afterthought instead of the critical issue that it is. Compared to five separate priorities proposed for vehicle transportation, the last two priorities dedicated to continued support of local transit, transit efforts and bicycle and pedestrian improvements are vague and non-comprehensive. Here are five of my priorities as a resident of Queen Anne's County and as a driver and a cyclist. Queen Anne's County should explicitly support further investigation of transit across the Bay Bridge, especially in the context of the Third Bay crossing. A study on the efficacy of the county ride system should be completed. How can it be improved in terms of ridership, coverage, and rider experience? Bike lanes, like those in Centerville and Queenstown, should be actually connected to one another instead of stopping and starting every fifty feet to avoid the work of designing for an intersection. They are rendered completely useless and non-connected in the current layout. There are many, many, many places where sidewalks are desperately needed. It is not enough to require new developments to install sidewalks to nowhere. Funds have to be allocated for retrofitting sidewalks into existing neighborhoods. The trail is not enough. Connections to the trail mean absolutely nothing if it's not safe to walk or bike to your destination, as is the case in the majority of the county. And finally, the Kent Narrows in particular are in desperate need of better crosswalks and sidewalks. The roundabout proposed in the Kent Island Transportation Plan is a good start, but again, it's nowhere close to a magic bullet, and much more thought needs to be given to how we can reduce car use overall in the, in that area. And yes, I know about the wayfinding project, but signs don't matter when even at the one existing crosswalk, I've had to wait five minutes for somebody to stop to let me walk across, even though it's legally required. And it's really frustrating to have raised issues like the crosswalks at Kent Narrows and be told that it's a state issue, but we'll talk to them about it. And then in this letter, where you have the opportunity to talk about it and make it a priority, it just wasn't given enough detail. I don't know what to do now, but I hope in the future you think about it in, I'll say, a better way.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Jenna Scott.
Jessica.
Jenna, J E N N A, last name Scott.
Okay. Thank you, Jenna.
Okay, anybody else signed up?
No.
Anybody else?
No one else. Okay, I have nobody.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Jenna. If you have any written comments, we'd be certainly happy to take those. Yeah, sure. It'd be great. Be helpful for us in the future. Thank you. All right, Commissioners, we can go into roundtable. We're a little ahead of schedule this evening. We have our constant yield hearing at seven, so we can't start that until seven.
See, we just got ten minutes.
We got, yes, roundtable.
Who wants to go first? Thees?
Not me.
So I, you know, I'd like to address some of the things, the concerns we just heard, because I think we have addressed them over my six years in here. And as I said, kind of sarcastically when it came up, and, and I know Jim's a veteran of sitting down there with the state for the last seven years for his, we don't get a lot of love from S H A. And we do pound on it. And to say we're not doing anything or to say we're not working towards bike paths and pedestrian, we, we have. I mean, we have a full transportation plan that covers all that. The corridor upgrade that would come with the replacement bridge at the existing sites would address all of that. But obviously, and I'm sure Jim will have something to say about tonight, we're mired in that process of getting that forward. This process, if it had been started twenty years ago, young Jenna would, probably wasn't even born, wouldn't even be in here talking about it because we'd already have a lot of that stuff in place. So a lot of this is stuff that has been kicked down, has been kicked down the road, ignored for a long time. Last bridge was built in what, seventy-two?
Yeah.
Fifty years ago? Come on. You're going to, and the traffic has probably quadrupled, maybe even more since then. This isn't a new problem, and it's certainly not one we're not looking at. I think we all take it seriously. We see the traffic on Sundays, and we know that a lot of these overpasses with bike lanes, walking paths, safe bike lanes, I mean, Route fifty right now, it's not a place, I'm not, I'm not walking or biking on Route fifty, and I don't think anybody wants to.
Well, it's illegal.
Or even on eighteen.
It's illegal. You can't.
Right, exactly. And even on eighteen, I don't think I'm, you know. And, and again, with the sidewalks, that's another issue. It's a state issue. We can push it. But again, you're talking rightaways and things like that, that right now in some of the areas eighteen don't exist. We've talked about moving the transmission lines down there on, by, and you can't do it because the rightaways don't exist. So there's a lot of moving parts and pieces, which is why I think we have some stopping and starting areas that we have here now. Obviously, the, the Route Eight overpass is a huge one, why the, the Cross Island and the South Island Trail aren't connected, because there's got to be a, a major overhaul done there to make that happen and make it safe. So that's about all I have is, because, you know, I just wanted to know that we have worked on it, and we continue to push for it. And it's really much, it's a part of a much bigger picture for Queen Anne's County that I probably will never live to see, unfortunately. But, you know, it, it is, it's something we got to continue to work on. And I know Jim and I know Stevie sitting over there and pounding their feet on the, or their hands on the desk and try to get something done, but it's, it's sad. It's, it's.
Well, and I'll, and I'll, I'll just segue in. Sitting on the Kent Narrows Development Foundation, as I do, and Jim has in the past, you know, that, that intersection there at the Kent Narrows has always been a very legitimate concern for the folks on that board and, and the business owners down there, and how it can be unsafe at times to be able to cross there. And Ms. Scott mentions having to wait five minutes to be able to cross there. That's eternity. That's absolute eternity. So, so it's been on the radar. Again, it's just trying to get the state to, to make the move on it. And, and you know, you know, you put, you put, you know, medians in the, in the center between the two lanes and plant, you know, flowers and stuff, anything to, to slow traffic down and make awareness that this is actually a crossover from the north part of the county, I mean, eighteen to the south and vice versa. Right now, you can travel underneath the Kent Narrows Bridge on that boardwalk part, and, and we're going to work on improving the aesthetics there and getting some proper lighting, and that will be a safe way where people will be able to work their way from the north and the south side of the, the Narrows. But it, it's certainly, like Commissioner Jack Wilson said, it's not from a lack of effort on our part. Anyway. Jim? We're talking about the state. It's only.
We segued into your favorite subject, Jim. You got to take.
Well, ironically, the state has been, I think, has, I hate to say come around, but I think that they, they, in, Jim Ports, the director of M D T A, has sent out a letter and said the only way to fix the Bay Bridge issues is to build a new one, because it is a capacity issue, and, and that's as simple as it gets. You know, before we started our meeting tonight, County Executive Stuart Pittman sent me a letter, and I think he sent it to a, a good bit of people, talking about their comment letters to the NEPA study for new crossings, and how he feels that, and I guess he being Anarona County, because he's the county executive, feels that the study is skewed in, in the vehicle counts. It's skewed in not taking into account COVID and people changing their travel habits. But this Commissioner Corcorino and I discussed earlier, and he brought up the point that, you know, the, the traffic issues we have here are not our commuters. It's not our people going to work. It's the people passing through going to the beaches. And we've proven that time and time again with our counters and how many people live here and how many vehicles are traveling through here. But I just found it, you know, ironic that in his letter and his closing comments, he, he went back to smart growth. And I don't understand what Anarona County thinks that they're going to do in Queen Anne's County, but to, to reference something like sprawl, if a new bridge is built, even more sprawl will go on, on the eastern shore. He is the county executive to Anarona County, not to Queen Anne's County. And to use us as an excuse why not to build a bridge, I think is totally ridiculous. You know, we, we, we being Queen Anne's County and the state, we have a new septic bill. So the bottom line is you cannot just develop anywhere you want with sprawl. You have to have a sewage treatment plant that can handle the capacity, and we don't have that in Queen Anne's County. So, you know, I, I, I think that's just, I'm, I'm trying to, Jack, I'm, I hate to use my normal line, because I'm not going to do that, but I just don't, I, I think that that's wrong for, for someone of his statute to come and say, you know, well, I'm only doing, you know, you shouldn't move forward with this because sprawl's going to happen on the eastern shore. I, I just, it doesn't hold water. Anybody that thinks that that bridge or our traffic issues are going to go away because we say no to a bridge is grossly mistaken. I think that this year, this summer, that the traffic is going to come back with a roar. I think people want to get out. They want to travel. They want to go on vacation. Look at last weekend with Spring Fest. Sunday, there was a three and a mile, three and a half mile backup going westbound. I mean, and here we are, and that was May, what, eighth?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I mean, that's, you know, it's.
Turned started.
It's coming. Now, getting back to the bridge, I will say that anybody that travels it every day, like, you know, Jack and I do, we're down to two steel plates.
Yep.
Two left. And I think one will disappear next week, and God willing, the other one will disappear shortly after that. And that portion of the projects are done. If, if anybody else travels, they notice that the very first bridge westbound, or excuse me, the very first gantry has been replaced. That's the new gantry style that they're, they're going to be putting up on the bridge, because the other ones were in such bad shape, they couldn't paint them or repair them, so they're just replacing them. And they're, they're doing everything they humanly can to get this gate system up and done. So kudos to M D T A in, in getting that done. And, you know, I, I think that, I, I think that a, a replacement bridge, and that's what we need to be calling this, it's a replacement bridge, not a third span, because anybody that thinks we're going to fit a third span in there and keep those other two up, I, I, I just got to believe that one of them's coming down. And, you know, I mean, that's, that's the capacity we need for the through traffic. And then, you know, Ms. Scott was here, and she talked about a lot of things, you know, that, again, Jack, you know, touched on those, but crosswalks, roundabouts, you know, turn lanes, open ditches. We have, you know, I, we being Queen Anne's County, I think have a, a very good chance with this new crossing, this replacement bridge, to get some of the things that were, were left out of in the seventies when, when the second span was built. And I mean overpasses for Queen Anne's County to can, more connectivity. Route eighteen is, is a huge problem from Dominion Road, even Postal Road, all the way to the Kent Narrows. It needs a turn lane. It needs to get rid of the open ditches. It's a very dangerous road. It needs the connectivity with a bicycle path and, and walkable. And to help us in the Kent Narrows, I mean, you know, government moves way too slow for me. I, I just, it drives me nuts. I mean, we, we've been working now for, I think it's seven months, to get the flashing lights at the crosswalks on the Cross Island Trail. And if you look at it, we have one at Four Seasons. Four Seasons paid for it. They put it up. We want to put two more up. We've gone to the state and told the state, you know, we want to do this, and, you know, they're, they're hesitant because they don't know if they have funding. And we said, we don't want your money. County's going to pay for it. Just tell us yes. Seven months later, well, we need this, we need that. It just drives me nuts. I mean, I think we should take a vote and just put them up, and then.
Ask for forgiveness later.
Right. I, I mean, what else? I mean, you know, I don't know. I just, so, anyway, so, you know, getting back to that, you know, I, you know, the public, you know, it's hard to see some of these things that are, that are coming to fruition. And I will say that this, Margie, when is the hearing for the Postal Road and the other text amendment? Is that next meeting or the following in June?
No, it's going to be in June. It's going to be the last Tuesday in June.
Okay. Well, I, you know, I hope the public comes out, and, and we'd like to hear from you, because that one project is, is willing to front the money, you know, somewhere around two million dollars to build the overpass over Route fifty to connect our Cross Island Trail. And that's something that's sorely needed, as the young lady came in here and talked about. So, you know, there are people willing to do things, you know, but it, it's a give and take game. And the last thing I guess I want to talk about is Saturday's event. And, and, you know, Commissioner Wilson and I both sit on the brag, and, and there's going to be discussion at the next brag about M D T A and, and some of their, I don't want to say techniques, but maybe some of their protocol, because I, you know, Saturday's incident with the barricade situation at Cox Neck and Route fifty, shutting down Route fifty in both direction and pushing everybody once again onto eighteen, was frustrating. And then when the situation got over, it was even more frustrating to see contraflow in place eastbound. So they could have waited fifteen minutes, and those three lanes would have probably flushed all the traffic off of Kent Island, then gone to contraflow. But it goes to show you whose ear and who's screaming the most is, you know, Anarona County. So, you know, I mean, they don't want any backups on Anarona County, and I don't, kudos to them. I don't blame them. But, you know, that was frustrating. So I'd like to get some answers on, one, you know, how, how we came about with this situation and a barricade from, an event from five o'clock in the morning, you know, no fault to Queen Anne's County or our Sheriff's Department, because they were only there in, in a, a backup role. And, you know, I, I know this happened years ago. You know, I know they have, and I, I don't want to harp on it too much, but I know there's techniques that they have when people pass through the area that alerts them to, to certain individuals or vehicles, and they make, they proceed to make a stop. And, and alls I would ask for is make the stop further down the road. Get away from the populated areas of Queen Anne's County if you're going to do this. And, and we'll see what they say. But I think I've touched on enough topics, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Wilson.
Well, what's left? On the subject of growth of traffic, years ago, I got into the analysis of what the Bay Bridge assumptions that the traffic authority itself was using for growth of traffic and found that, I thought that they were measuring it incorrectly, and my assumptions were adequately good that we got put on the, on the Baltimore Traffic Commission as a result of that, because you, you, you really have to watch traffic in terms of the cycles in the economy. They're very responsive. And discussions of, you know, how Zoom and that kind of telecommuting, that may affect workers, but the crush we have isn't workers, it's people passing through as tourism. And those are going to be highly responsive to the, to the strength of the economy, which, as I told you two or three or four months ago, it was going into an inflationary madness, and I'm here to tell you that it's now happening. And that the lumber prices that I talked to you about, saying it was then at nine hundred, having ascended from four hundred bucks per thousands of square feet, and it went as eleven hundred, then it was twelve hundred, well, now it's sixteen hundred and eighty dollars for what you could have bought for four hundred a year ago. Corn is at an eight year high. By the way, farm prices are immediately responsive to crop prices. It's what regulates it. So we're looking at a situation in which almost any contract, I would be highly dubious of whether it would be a wise thing to do without knowing that the contractor was hedged against what's going to be very unexpected cost for them. So that's that. Let's see, what else can I dwell on? Last week, we had a very unusual occurrence, which I'm not happy about, and I think you shouldn't be either, which was at Eastern Hospital, for reasons that are not disclosed, we have an alert system which tells ambulances, don't deliver to this hospital when it's so heavily loaded that it can't take customers. And sometimes we get twenty, thirty hours a week, and hospitals are clogged up. I've seen in the flu season, hospitals like Anarona get up to a hundred and twenty hours. Well, last week, Eastern Hospital logged in a hundred and sixty hours, only a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week. So, and it's not flu season, and there's no pandemic. I mean, I don't think we got three cases down there. So I think Mr. Gazelle should come up here and explain what, what is going on, because when that's our primary place of delivery, you can imagine what happens when we have to get deflected from it to other places, and also it can badly affect your unload time. So just a few notes from this corner of the room. So, all right.
Presidente?
Well, Jim, I was just kidding about ten minutes per person. I think you took it. We're getting closer to the, the next hearing. Let me see. There's not much more to say. I would actually commend Ms. Scott for coming in and speaking. She's also come, sends us emails with suggestions, and she has attended a lot of the comprehensive plan meetings, and I think it's great to see our younger citizens taking an interest and giving us their thoughts. I would encourage more people to do that, regardless of whether you're just finishing engineering school or wherever you are. Take, take more of an interest in what's going on in the community. We certainly like to hear everything and do take everything into consideration. Let me see. There is a car wash this Saturday on the. Saturday on the, May 15th, from 9:00 to 11:30, uh, where some young citizens, young students, it'll be at Safe Harbor Church, which is across from Kent Island High School, raising some funds, uh, for a family that has fallen into hard times as a result of COVID expenses and recovering from that. So, there's another opportunity of, you know, our young citizens getting out there and trying to make a difference. So, wanted to give a plug for that. I will be out there to get my car washed. Um, they probably won't be happy when they see how dirty it is, but whatever. Um, and congratulations to, uh, Mike Hamner on, uh, being elected Cinco de Mayor of Kent Island. Colt Classic had a very, uh,
Landmark.
Well-turned-out event. Um, and it was really great to see, um, you know, events happening again, and people turning out, and the community getting excited behind something. Uh, so, thank you Colt Classic for doing that. I'm hoping to see more events. I'm looking forward to, uh, 4H Peach Festival, all the kinda things that we missed out on last year. Um, I like, hope to see more and more of that, uh, Waterman Crab Festival, all of those things that...
Sellersville Firehouse has a big one coming up.
Yep.
Beef and Brew, yeah.
So, we'll be, we will be talking up all those events, because I think it's important everybody gets back out there, and let's get Queen Anne's County back to normal. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Well, no, we got our budget hearing. We adjourn, we adjourn after that, I think.
We adjourn for that, and then?
We adjourn from this, and then?
We normally do the hearing and then adjourn, right? We, I mean...
You can take a recess.
Yeah, that's right. So, real quick, though, before we do, since we have a couple minutes. So, I, I really still wanna focus on what Jim brought up and we've been talking about, cuz this, this whole traffic thing, in my opinion, is gonna be the biggest elephant in the room for the next 10 years. Um, and thinking ahead and looking ahead is probably the most important thing we can do, and commissioners, whether we're here for another year, two years, 10 years, whatever it is, it's gonna be the thing that we're gonna, every commissioner's gonna have to deal with for next 10 years, at, at a minimum. And one of the things that I think that disturbs me about it is, on social media and other areas and talking to people, that there's a misconception of what the whole grand plan of what this would look like. I mean, it's, you, people are talking about, "Oh, you're gonna have three bridges there, and people are gonna be coming in droves and moving here." And it's, and like Jim already mentioned, that's not a reality, and just in terms of the infrastructure that's available to come and live in Queen Anne's County at this point. It's very limited. But the other part of it is, and, uh, I know I've talked to Jim and Chris and Phil and pretty much everybody about it, is the reality is, in 2052, the first bridge will be 100 years old, which will put a 10 years past its quote-unquote "life." Um, if we build a bridge somewhere else in the state, a crossing, in anybody's right mind, do they think that they're gonna continue to maintain a 100-year-old bridge and, at that time, 75-year-old bridge, when they have a brand-new shiny bridge in another place? Probably not. So, let's look at that reality 20 years down the road. You're living on Kent Island now. You work across the bridge today. You're in your 30s. Obviously, probably still be working into your 50s and whatnot. Now, you have to commute across the bridge. 2050, they decide, "You know what? These bridges, we can't use them anymore. So, we're gonna have to shut these down." And we have this nice shiny new bridge somewhere down south. Can you imagine driving from Kent Island? You think traffic's bad now. Can you imagine driving from Kent Island to DC, or Baltimore for that matter, if you have to go two and a half hours down south and back up? That is an alternative reality to if we do not replace those bridges where they sit, for the people in Queen Anne's County. And I think people lose sight of that, and I don't think they look ahead at what all the ramifications of not replacing, and I use the word "replace" because I don't like when people say "a new bridge." We're replacing something that's gonna be 100 years old. We're replacing something that's gonna be 75, 80 years old. Past its useful life, for the most part. And, yeah, we can keep putting patches, but we're spending, Jim, do you guys even have a number of what we're spending there, millions per year with maintenance on them things? I mean, it's gotta be.
Just, anybody can go on the MDTA's website and just pull up what the, what it costs. I mean, you know, they're, they're putting in, uh, 5 KW cable. I think it was 5 KW cable. I think it was $52 million. I mean, the, uh, suspension spans, uh, the, the re-cabling was $220 million. I mean, it, hundreds of millions of dollars. I'd like to know what this, the gate system's costing, but, you know, again, yeah, the, the, the money is, is out of this world. I mean, it really is for these bridges. And, and you're, but MDTA already admits that. They, they, they admitted that to say, "Look, don't people understand that these bridges are getting old, and they're gonna need to be replaced?" And you're right, this should be called a replacement bridge. Anybody that thinks there's gonna be a third span, and there's gonna have that many lanes coming here, just not, that's not practical. I mean, you know, more than likely, it's gonna be four lanes in both directions. And with the bridge, just like, you know, I used the Woodrow Wilson Bridge. Anybody that's gone over the Woodrow Wilson Bridge, it's, it's divided by, uh, a Jersey wall, and then it's broken again by Jersey walls, so that the impact of any type of, uh, accident doesn't shut down the entire bridge. And that is, that handles a lot of traffic.
Yes, it does.
And it doesn't, you, you don't ever slow down there anymore. And that's what we want. We want this traffic to flow through. It's a shame that when the first bridge was built, uh, it cut the island in half. Actually, the second bridge cut it really in half. The first one, they just, you know, the shortest distance, the cheapest cost, and, and I get that. And the, the, the older bridge is in better shape than the newer bridge. So, and I think that the state would admit that, but, you know, again, you know, it's, it's a replacement bridge, not, not a third span. So...
And they're not, and they're not stopping, and what people gotta realize, they're not stopping to build in Rehoboth or Ocean City right now. That's, that's, our effect is that. It's not who's moving to Queen Anne's County. It's all those, uh, vacation spots they're putting down in the Delaware beaches and Ocean City, which precipitates this traffic that we wind up with. It's gonna continue as they build to get even more volume. I mean, it's just, it's, it's gonna happen.
I, I would love to see somebody, you know, just go back and, and, and research the last 10 years, you know, the growth that's occurred. And I think that the census will, if it ever is published, will show us that on the beaches, you know, how much is, how much growth has taken place there. You know, it's now a, a year-round.
Right.
People are living there year-round. And, and I think it's, and you're seeing that impact here at the only crossing, you know, in, in Maryland. So...
Well, I say, you know, it's funny, cuz I don't go down to Ocean City that often, and had, just hadn't not been down there, other than Formaco a couple times, but not really driving up and down and looking around. But, I mean, remember as a kid, all of the single-story, two-story condo complexes I remember as a kid are now eight, 10-story high-rises. With, so, you know, the, the six families that used to stay in that same little area, now, now you have 60 families in that same compact area. So, that's 60, 58 or 59 more cars, whatever, coming back over the bridge to get there every weekend. And those places, when, you know, pre-COVID, they were filled.
And, you know, we, we mentioned Ocean City, and anybody that does travel to Ocean City, there's the, the Route 90 Bridge, and then there's the Route 50 Bridge, where you come up through, uh, Harpoon Hannah is up on the top side.
Right.
That's just a third of the beaches, Ocean City. You put all the Delaware beaches, and they're all still traveling right here through Queen Anne's County and through that bridge. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's a huge impact, and that number is never gonna go down. Uh, it really isn't, you know, so...
And again, just the corridor, correct me if I'm wrong, the corridor is actually looking at 97 to 404, because at 404, typically, you either have people going to Ocean City or Delaware. But up to that point, you have everybody coming through Queen Anne's County. And then 97 is the same way. You have 50, 97.
Right.
Coming from two directions back to one. Is that?
They identified the corridor from the 50, 97 on the western shore to the 5301 split.
Which I think, but, but...
They already had 30, they already have 50, you know, that's already in there.
But they don't have the 404.
For an additional lane all the way up to 404. But they just never funded it.
They never funded it.
It's there.
Have to be part of that, is what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, from the split to 404.
Yeah. Which 404 needs an overpass.
And an overpass there, which would eliminate that traffic light and all that, and should get the backup there. So...
I mean, everybody knows what needs to be done, but who's gonna have the intestinal fortitude to pump in $10 billion to say, "We're gonna do this"? And that's, that's where, you know, the rub is. I mean, that's, you know, they know what has to be done. Everybody knows it, and it's just, you know, this, this NEPA that should've taken, I personally think could've been done in three years, has taken five almost. And then, how long's the next one gonna take? And it's not funded. So, I mean, there's a long, there's a long, you, 10 years? I would be dancing if it was just 10 years, but I think it's gonna go...
I was being conservative.
Yeah, it's gonna go on forever. So...
Well, I don't mean to be argumentative, but I don't agree with you
Okay.
in the following way, that, that, that there's a financial problem, but there's a very large public problem, too. And the public problem is, you got enough people over in Anaronda that don't want it, in a county that's 10 times our size, and a very substantial part of our citizens who don't want it. So, you've got both a financial problem and you've got a public problem.
Well...
You know, and that's, I think, not recognizing that isn't, you know...
I agree with you 100%.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that we disagree. I, I, I agree with that 100%, but I think that those that, that don't want it, a majority of them don't understand, and need to be educated on, "What is your option? What is your option if you don't want another bridge?" Live with the traffic as it gets worse, and it will start to affect our property values. It will start to affect those with money that are gonna say, "I, I can't deal with this anymore," and leave. And that's when it's gonna, that's when we're gonna have the problems. And, and that's coming. I've, anywhere you, in this state you look where there's traffic issues, you'll see people fleeing. Look at COVID did. Look at the explosion in, in the, in the residential market. Look at the amount of homes in Queen Anne's County alone that have sold. I mean, you know, we used to have an inventory of million-plus-dollar homes. I mean, I can remember, there's, one house has been for sale for 10 years. It's almost $5 million. Gone. There's no backup. There, I mean, no backup. There's no, there's no inventory anymore. And that's because people were moving away from other issues. Now, they're here. So, how long were they told? I mean, remember that? We've had a break for 16 months from traffic. It's coming. And we'll see all those people that don't want a bridge and think that, okay. My, my question is, anybody that doesn't want a bridge, what's your solution? Because to put it anywhere else, all roads lead to run. The roads have been built. They've come here. For the last 50 years, they've done everything to get traffic to this location. So, if, if you're gonna say, "Build it somewhere else", okay. As Jack pointed out, and everybody knows, but we have two aging bridges, number one. Number two, if you think that that's gonna alleviate the traffic in the next 20 to 25 years, you're grossly mistaken. So, I'd rather sue for as much as we can humanly get from the state in amenities and upgrades, so that that traffic that's out there on Route 50 stays on Route 50. We put up the sound barrier walls, so communities don't have to listen to it, and, you know, we get back to a better quality of life, cuz right now, we don't have that, especially on Sundays. So, you know, we'll see what, I, I think the state agrees to that, but again, it's, it's, it's a heavy lift, and we'll see what happens. So, but I don't disagree with you. There's a lot of people that do not want it, but I'm gonna say, "Okay, well, then. I hope you're not the one that's complaining on Sundays when you can't leave your house." So...
And I think with that, the encouragement is for people, no matter what, which way you sit on the issue.
Mm-hmm.
Read what's out there.
Right.
And, and then think about also what's gonna happen. Think about the different alternatives. Think about if it goes somewhere down south, or if it goes here, or if there's nothing. What, what's the situation gonna be? So, really think it through, not just have the visceral reaction to, "I just don't want a bridge." It, it takes a lot of, um, thought process, because it's not a simple decision. I think it's, it's important for people to really think about it, cuz remember how bad the traffic was when they're doing the redecking? That's the traffic we'll have routinely 15 years from now.
Ten years ago, we didn't have any traffic issues. We didn't. It started about eight years ago, and, and it's grown progressively worse. I mean, one thing COVID did do, it stopped us from doing town halls. It stopped us from doing the, you know, our Commissioner's Corner and, and, and meeting with the public, cuz I wanted to do that on Kent Island. I wanted to have at least two town halls, to talk to people about this, to, you know, to educate them, to, to find out what it is that they don't want. And, I mean, you know, when we talk about growth in Queen Anne's County, we have one sewage treatment plant on Kent Island, and it's at capacity, pretty much. It's done. And I don't think anybody here wants to build a new one. Nobody here wants to, you know, regrade it. So, I mean, you know, I, I, I throw that development and out of, you know, out-of-control growth out the window. I don't, I don't, I don't buy into that story, uh, cuz that's just not gonna happen in Queen Anne's County. So, you know...
Well, by comparison, Jim, it, it doesn't even compare to when they built the first or second bridge. It was all farmland. So, yeah, there was gonna be development, and that's what happened. Well, you built a third bridge to replace those two. There's, the development's done when you get there.
Right. So, there was no zoning back then.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, just put, put a house up anywhere. Yeah, no, I agree. And that's what I'm saying. It's, it's, it's a wholly, totally different animal you're looking at now than when you built the, and I hear a lot of people say that, "Well, when they built the second bridge, all this develop..." Well, yeah, because you still had a whole bunch of farmland sitting right there across the bridge. A lot of farmers...
You had no laws, you had no laws stopping it. That's what I mean, the...
That's what I'm saying. Now, you have things that, you have, put things in place that, right, to check it. So...
So, you know, I mean, I...
And Stevie, I agree with you 100%. There's people that don't, but I also agree with what Jim's saying, is I think a lot of those people that just take that knee-jerk reaction that, "No, I don't wanna see another bridge," don't understand, in, in my mind, his mind, and it should be in all of our minds, that's not a third span to make three full bridges. It's a replacement to make sure that we can both flow the traffic through Queen Anne's County and make sure that, for the long haul, we're not cut off from the rest of the world one day, which could happen. I mean, we can say all we want. There's big ships going to that bridge. One of the things takes them bridges out, where's Queen Anne's County tomorrow morning?
Yeah. Well, and again, it's our, our lifeline to the hospital, too.
Absolutely.
That's, that's a big one.
Easton shut down. Where do we go?
Yeah. Right.
I'm not arguing. I'm just...
I know. I, I, no, and I take your point. I mean, I...
I'm pointing at a reality that, you know, that is the reality. It is the elephant in this deal. It's a...
Yep.
I think it's much greater than the money end of it, frankly.
Hmm. You're probably right.
Yeah, you're probably right, yeah.
Yeah. No doubt. But we can't hide from it. It's, it's there, and we gotta face it. So...
This is what happens. We have some extra time to kill.
Right.
When we have time to kill, we just start talking out loud about...
Are we alive still?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
That's truly what Round Table's supposed to be, I think, is...
Right. Take a five-minute recess?
Absolutely.
Sure. Back in five. Back in five.
Sounds old.
Yeah, you said next one.
Yes, just so you know.
All right, we're back.
All right, Commissioners, it's 7 o'clock, and we are here tonight for the presentation of the County Commissioner's Fiscal '22 Proposed Budget. This is the Constant Yield Hearing. And this first slide, we have a presentation here that I'll go through briefly to give everybody the highlights of our proposed budget. First slide at the bottom, I just wanted to highlight that we do have all this information and more on our county website, and the web link there on that first slide is there for folks that want to dive deeper into the details of our Fiscal '22 budget. So overall, the introduction, we just want to continue to demonstrate sound financial management, providing responsible services to our residents here in Queen Anne's County. Our '22 budget reflects recommendations from our Spending Affordability Committee, compliance with policies on debt management, the maintenance of a healthy rainy day fund, and our fund reserves, use of our fund balance and PEGO funds to reduce proposed capital debt, and we have developed a sustainable path forward through 2030, at least a plan to comply with the results of the Kerwin Commission. So those are all things that our Sustainable Affordability Committee has recommended, and we've complied with those items. And as an example, our proposed '22 capital budget does reflect a bond sale of $7.7 million, which was originally forecasted at $14 million this current year, so we are complying with those objectives. We're also very consistent with our AAA bond rating. We're very proud of that. We've been rated AAA now for the past nine years. It demonstrates our strength across the major credit factors, our strong economy, our large reserves that we have here, and an affordable debt burden, so we're very, very proud of Some budget highlights. Number one, this coming year, our property tax rate will remain the same, .8471 per hundred dollars of assessed value, and this will be the 11th year that we've had that particular property tax rate. Income tax rate also remains the same at 3.2%. We have a projected budget growth of about 7.3% over Fiscal '21, going from $143.8 million to $154.4 million. Obviously, as always, income tax and property tax make up the lion's share of our county revenue sources at 86.3%. We have a projected growth of 16.8% in income tax and 2.6% projected growth in property tax revenue. This slide demonstrates where we are in the state of Maryland as far as real property tax rate by county. This shows all of the Maryland counties and Baltimore City, and we are at the yellow bar there near the, and the bottom of the chart, we are the fourth lowest real property tax rate in the state of Maryland. Some budget highlights for this Fiscal '22 budget, leading off with the Board of Education. We had funded the Board of Education for operations at $1.3 million above the maintenance of effort level. This is despite declining enrollment. We did propose funding at a level to provide eligibility for state funding and for the Board of Education for an additional $3.1 million. Our budget also includes funding for new employee recruitment and retention actions. We are including an employee compensation package increase of a 2% cost of living and pay-for-performance. We added 20 new positions across eight different departments, ranging from entry level to leadership positions to ensure continuity of government operations. We've increased volunteer fire company allocation by 5%, public libraries by 4.1%. We've shifted $1 million in funding for vehicle replacements in various departments, and that's been shifted from the capital budget over to the operations side to reduce our debt. And our budget includes funding for body worn cameras for the sheriff's office as an This next slide is a pictorial pie chart showing our income and property tax revenues, the biggest sections of this pie chart showing them as the major contributors to our revenue stream, other local taxes at about 9%, and some other miscellaneous fees and charges, but this shows you where the revenue comes from. Our budget, again, is $154.4 million overall. And this next slide shows all of the allocations by type and the actual amounts of those revenue streams coming in, leading off, you know, after the property taxes and income taxes, we have various other taxes and fees, including public utility taxes, hotel taxes, recordation taxes, which is the third largest in our FY '22 budget, at $7 million, but this gives you the actual amounts for Fiscal '22. Then on the expense side of the equation, again, this shows pictorially where the money goes once we receive that and budget that out. Education is the leader here at 40%, consuming 40% of the overall budget, followed by our Public Safety Group, which includes emergency services and detention, then Public Works, and then we have a large sector there, Other Agencies, which includes Sheriff's Office, State's Attorney, Circuit Court, Health Department, which consumes about 15% of our budgeted revenue. Then we have a similar series of slides for each county department and agency that shows the allocations that they receive. And again, we show the FY '20 actuals, the approved budget for '21, our proposed '22, and the change from '21 to '22. The first grouping is the County Administration Group, which includes the Commissioner's Office, Budget and Financing Resources, Economic Development, name a few. That's about 4% of the overall total, followed by Community Services, our Department of Aging, Housing and Community Services, Planning and Zoning, Public Safety, again, Detention Center, and Emergency Services, about 11%. Public Works, they have a large array of agencies, sub-agencies, including now Animal Services, which has increased considerably at 13% as a result of their growth and very big need over the pandemic. Adoptions were very high, so they've been very, very successful down there at Animal Services. Parks and Recreation is next. They also have under them the Airport and the Golf Course, which are both enterprise funds, so they're at 4% of the overall budget. Again, Board of Education at the top there, single line, that is 40% of the budget, and then we have the Other Agency Group, which is the 15% sector of the budget. That includes, as I mentioned, various agencies, State's Attorney, Sheriff's Office, Circuit Court, Health Department, Library, Board of Elections, et cetera. And lastly, we have a couple of other expenditures. We have our debt service for Board of Education for school construction and other big projects for the Board, section for general county debt, those are debt service payments, and then we have other expenditures, which include things like insurance, OPEB, other post-employee benefits, grants, transfers out, and non-department rental expenses. This next series of slides shows all of the budget enhancements that were added. Again, I'm not going to go through these in the interest of time here this evening, but these are all the budget inclusions that we added over the past, since Fiscal '21. So these are listed out by department for reference for anybody that wants to dig into this a little bit deeper, but we did add some positions for emergency services and some other leadership roles in the Department of Aging and Detention Center, so I can flip through these. And you see on this last slide here, the addition of the body worn cameras under the sheriff's office for $176,000 is an example there. Capital budget, moving into that, we had $32.2 million for capital budget this year. Again, leading off with the Board of Education, we had $6.5 million proposed, and that includes funding for a new central office, the Board of Education Administration Building, roof replacement at Canard Elementary School, building assessment projects, a health suite expansion, technology plans, security measures, transportation, furniture replacements, and playground replacements. Next was the Kent Island Library at $1.7 million. That's a project ongoing. This will be the last year. Hopefully, that'll be finished sometime around next, early next spring. That is a big expansion project that's going very well. Our Parks Department, we're funding them at $2.6 million, which includes funding for the Terrapin Nature Preserve, ranger station and bathroom, athletic field lighting at Old Love Point Park, and playground equipment at Route 18 Park. We have an increased allocation for the volunteer fire companies at $625,000, YMCA at $500,000. That's a multi-year project, this is the first year for that. Emergency Services, $500,000 for public safety dispatch upgrades, which is ongoing. This is the final year for our emergency services upgrades. Detention Center, $4.3 million, which is grant. Construction is targeted for Fiscal '23 for the detention center, expansion and renovation. And the last two projects, we have a public sewer extension for Sellersville to Barclay at $4.9 million, which is grant, and South Kent Island Sewer System Phases II and III, which is enterprise and water quality load. So they're included in our capital plan, but they are not general funded projects. Overall, the funding sources that we use for our capital plan this year, we're proposing to transfer into the capital from general fund as PEGO, $2.1 million. We have grants of $10.3 million, a bond sale, as mentioned, at $7.7 million, operating funds at $600,000, capital fund balance usage at $4 million, and other funding at $7.4 million, which includes POS, public open space money, or project open space money, USDA grants, water quality loans, all make up those other funding sources there. Next, we show the Fiscal '22 capital budget by funding source, and I just mentioned all the funding sources. They're shown across the top of these, this series of slides. On the left-hand side there, the description of each particular project are included for each department, and you can see on there, we've got everything listed. We've highlighted all the major projects throughout this next year. And I can go through these quickly. They're here for reference, for everybody to see. Really can't read them very well on the screen. We do have hard copies of this available for any folks that are here in the audience tonight. And the next grouping of slides includes the capital budget, the six-year capital budget, and that basically provides a roadmap for us over the next six years. This series of slides shows the, all of the capital projects that are proposed, planned, contemplated over the next six years. The first column is the total for Fiscal '22, all projects, and then we have five planning years, which allows us to manage, you know, our debt loads, our planning for budgetary projects in terms of big schools, big projects, big buildings, and other things that help us to overall manage our debt and our funding sources over that six-year time horizon. And these are projects that are subject to some variability and timing, and they're adjusted accordingly to manage our overall budget. So those are there as well for review. And upcoming dates, tonight is May 11th, our Constant Yield Hearing. We have another performance, another presentation tomorrow night at the Sellersville Middle School. Our final budget work session is scheduled for a week from today, May 18th, to make any final adjustments. And we do plan to adopt our budget now at this point in time and set the tax rate on May the 25th at 7:00 p.m. So that would be our budget adoption date, so one week from today. And.
Two weeks from today.
Excuse me, two weeks from today. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. Two weeks from today, May the 25th, 7:00 p.m. And we can now receive any public comment. Anybody signed up for public comment? All right, okay, we have.
Dr. Kane, sign up. Come on up.
Yep, come on, Dr. Kane, yep.
All right, good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Maun. For the record, my name is Andrea Kane. I serve as Superintendent of Schools for Queen Anne's County, representing the largest employer in the district with over 1,100 full-time and full and part-time employees who serve the needs of approximately 7,400 students this year. First, I'd like to thank you for meeting with my team and myself and with our board members so that you could better understand the needs of the school district. We are greatly appreciative of those efforts. And then the other reason that I'm here, of course, is to ask you on May 18th, as you just mentioned, if you might reconsider fully funding our budget so that we may be able to avoid cutting teaching positions in order to balance our budget. Last year, we were forced to cut 19 teaching positions. The year prior to that, we cut nine positions. The year prior to that, we cut seven positions. This year, we will likely cut up to 25 to 30 positions in order to balance our budget. And of course, that is pending final calculations for MOE, as you know, they have not come out yet, and state aid. So that in order to balance our budget, we may have to do that. If this happens, we will certainly have to increase class sizes, and we won't be able to offer our families who do prefer the virtual option for next year. So my request is that you reconsider on May 18th, and I certainly do thank you for that reconsideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Kane.
Thank you.
No one else signed up?
No sign up. Anybody else? Anybody online? Nope. All right. Anybody up here want to say anything? We. All right, I think that's all we have signed up for public comments, so Commissioners, if you have any comments you want to make.
I would just like really quick to thank staff for their, all their hard work, our department heads and our directors, for working closely with our county administrator to come up with something that gives the Commissioner something to work with and adjust. So again, on behalf of our staff and department heads, a job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We all said anything to say? We all spoke yesterday, so if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at this time.
Samute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.